Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, June 3 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board is plans to go into, well, let me, first of all, let me have a motion to open tonight's meeting at 6:36 PM.
I move.
May I have a second? Holly, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I will move now to go into executive session for the board to discuss litigation, seek the advice of attorneys, and discuss matters of health and safety. So I will move to go into exec also at 6:36. May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. See you in exec. Thanks. To the meeting for the Chappaqua Central School District for Wednesday, June 3. The board has been in executive session since about 6:36 PM discussing litigation, seeking advice of counsel, and discussing matters of safety. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:43 PM?
Don't move.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thanks, Holly. All in favor?
Aye.
And now if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, usually led by Holly McCall, but she will introduce a guest person this evening.
Tonight's guest is a West Orchard student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We start tonight with the president's report. First of all, thank you, all of us, everyone, for being here. I know we have a lot of attendees tonight, and that's because tonight is a night that many of us look forward to throughout the year. It is the night that we honor all of our retirees. The teachers, administrators, and longtime employees that we honor tonight really deserve our recognition because they are wonderful examples of service to our school district and our community and professional lives well-lived. It is hard to imagine this night without some hugs and handshakes, but we will do our best via Zoom to give virtual hugs and as much love and admiration to all of our retirees as possible. On behalf of the board, we thank you for your years of service to this district and for contributing days and weeks and years of positivity to all of our lives. We look forward to your tributes a little later this evening. I know we have discussed our budget on numerous occasions over the last several months, and we feel we have presented to you a well-thought-out and fiscally responsible budget. Just to remind everyone one last time about timing, our budget vote is on June 9 by absentee ballot only. All registered voters should have received their absentee ballots by now. If you have not, please contact our incredible district clerk, Lisa Elsner. I don't know how she made this all happen, but she did. Please contact her via email. She will make sure that you get a ballot packet if, for some reason, your ballot packet did not arrive. We urge all of you to exercise your right to vote and to fill in your ballots and return them no later than 5:00 PM on June 9. We realize that there is a tight time window, and please know then that you can not only return them by mail, you can drop them in a secure locked Dropbox at the education center at the entrance to the high school. With respect to the Board of Education vote and library vote, there will be an opportunity to vote for those seats as well on your absentee ballot. There are five candidates running for two Board of Ed seats this year, my seat and Vicki's, and there are three candidates running for a single library seat. If you did not see the Candidates Night sponsored by the League of Women Voters last Thursday night, the video is available for viewing. A link to the event can be found on the League's website, on Facebook, and a couple of other spots I think people have posted. We urge all of you to please fill out your absentee ballot and vote. There are several items that I know that the superintendent will be addressing tonight, excuse me, including graduation plans for our seniors. I know that board members have received many inquiries about this, and I know this has been a difficult time for many of our seniors and their families. I myself have a senior about to graduate from Greeley, so I understand the concerns, but I would like to say that I know that the administration has been working tirelessly to reimagine as many senior events as possible and to make this a memorable time for our seniors despite the limits of the pandemic. Graduation is no exception, and Christine will give an update tonight as to current plans to mark this special occasion and rite of passage for our seniors. But please know, a lot of thought and discussion with many different stakeholders has been taking place and have gone into these plans. I also want to mention tonight that we will be approving a slate of grants from the Chappaqua School Foundation. I know Christine and Adam will discuss them further during the superintendent's report, but I would just like to say that CSF generously supports our schools year after year with innovative grants that further the mission of this district, and on behalf of the board, I would like to say a gracious thank you. I could not end the president's report tonight without addressing that this community and this country has been deeply affected by and is struggling with the senseless killing of George Floyd on May 25. I want to thank Christine for her letter to the community yesterday and for stating very clearly that our Chappaqua school community has no tolerance for racism, discrimination, or hatred in any form. I know that many of our families are determined to take positive action to combat the systematic oppression and racism that people of color deal with in our country on a daily basis, and I thank Christine for passing along resources to help our families have these sometimes difficult yet very necessary conversations. I hope all of you will find actions that you can take with your own families to be a part of a solution here. At the suggestion of one of my children, I watched a speech to the protesters in Atlanta given by Killer Mike of the group Run the Jewels, and that was one of the most moving and profound and positive speeches I have seen. So I urge all of you to continue to do what you can, to watch and to listen and to talk and to peacefully protest if you wish, and to vote so that all of us can do all of our parts to collectively affect the change we want to see. I would like to give any of the other members of the board, if they want an opportunity to say anything or not, I just want to leave that up to them, and if anyone would like to speak, and then we can move on to the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to say something if I could, Jane. So I'd like to echo the sentiments that Jane expressed, and I just want to say that as our nation is going through yet another chapter of confronting racism and violence against people of color, and as brutal events can be recorded now and shown on our screens so that we can see firsthand the horrific reality that people are at risk because of the color of their skin, like Jane said, so many of us are asking ourselves what we can do to heal the inequalities that are so inherent in our society, and how can we play a part to make this world a better place? So, and by the way, I want to commend the Horace Greeley Black Student Union for sponsoring Unity Day, which fell at a very opportune time. They're doing great work, so I want to recognize them and thank them. So I've asked myself what we can do as a school board and as educational leaders in our community and how we can impact the culture and climate of our greater society in a way that can leave a lasting mark in teaching our students to stand up for social justice. So I know that we're a community dedicated to these goals, and our school mission is very consistent with that. So I did think that consistent with our school board's role of setting a course of study and approving curriculum for its schools, I'd like to ensure that our curriculum provides students a complete and well-rounded history and background of race and race relations in the United States. I believe we already do a really good job of this, but it's our school's tradition of continuous improvement, and so I'd like to see us recommit and continue to evolve in this area. And just to give you an example, there is one incident in particular, which is the 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre. It's an event that went largely ignored by society and the media and went unmentioned in classrooms for decades. I do know that we cover it in our AP US History class. Just a brief summary, after World War I, Tulsa was nationally known for its affluent African-American community, which had over 300 black-owned businesses. It was in the Greenwood District, known as Black Wall Street. The entire community of 35 square blocks was burnt and destroyed, including 1,200 homes, businesses, and church, and about 300 people were believed to have died. It was referred to historically as a "race riot," which allowed insurance companies to avoid honoring insurance claims, whereas what took place was really a race massacre. So although this event is covered in AP US History, I would ask the administrators to look into covering these events and any other events like that more broadly in the general social studies curriculum for all students in an age-appropriate way, perhaps even in middle school. We might even look as to how we refer to the event in APUSH, whether we refer to a riot or a massacre. The facts and evidence have been preserved by the Tulsa Historical Society and Museum, so it's all there. So I just cite this event as only one example of the nexus between racism, violence, poverty, and social injustice that we need to teach our children. I would also ask that we place a very conscious effort to keep updating the curriculum with new information that arises as to race relations in the U.S. as it pertains to any race. And finally, I would ask the board to consider passing a resolution to this effect at our next board meeting to give the issue the importance and formality that it deserves, and I would be happy to start a draft of that that we could work on collectively if that's something that the board would agree to. Thank you. I appreciate the time to talk about this, and I will yield the floor.
Hillary, go ahead.
Sorry, do you want to go first?
Yeah, the only, thank you. I don't know what else to add, Vicki, that was so well said. I'm happy that we live in a very thoughtful town and a town of well-educated people, and yes, we have problems, as everyone else does, but we have educators in this town who will do the right thing to make sure that the children and the adults in our town understand what we should be doing and how we should be learning. So thank you, Vicki, for those great comments, and I look forward to co-sponsoring a resolution with you if you want.
I just wanted to say, and I echo what everybody has said, and I think that what's been particularly hard about the confluence of events here between the senseless violence and the pandemic is that everyone's grieving alone, and people have been grieving alone in many different ways over the course of this pandemic. And this newest incident, because it's hardly the first, but the most recent incident of racial violence and hatred simmering to the surface yet again, I think, has left a lot of people grieving again, isolated for sort of the state of the country right now. And I just wanted to say, and I know that everybody, you know, up here or on this Zoom or however you want to characterize it, echoes this, that you're not alone, and to the extent that anyone in the community wants or needs to reach out, we remain a community. We are a community that may not be able to be in the same classrooms right now or in the same board meeting or in person much at all, but I feel that one of the strengths of this district has always been the sense of community, and just wanted to say that even in these very disturbing times, we remain a community, and please do reach out to the board, to the administration, to your kids' teachers, because everybody wants us to be here for each other and support each other, and we are still that even if not in person. So we know this is an incredibly difficult time, and we don't have to feel alone even if we have to be alone.
Thank you, Hillary. Go ahead, Holly.
Vicki, I absolutely agree and appreciate the history lesson because I will admit my ignorance and not actually knowing about the Tulsa massacre. That said, I believe that education is our way forward as a people to combat this legacy of systemic racism. So I am absolutely in support, Vicki, of your suggestion of a resolution and continuing to have open, honest dialogue and continuing to educate ourselves and have these conversations with our families and our children and our friends. And we are a community, and I do think that we are all going to have to work together to come out in a better place, and I do hope that this is an inflection point for our nation. And I want to make sure that I play my role appropriately, and I feel that this is really a great place to be doing it. So thank you all.
Right. Thank you, everyone, for your really wise and well-appreciated comments, really, really very much, and thank you, Christine, for sending such a powerful message to the community. Thank you. We will be continuing to work on this on behalf of this district very much. We have one more item tonight under the president's report before I hand this all off to Christine for the superintendent's report. I would like a motion for 1.1.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the calendar for next year for our Board of Ed meetings?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the calendar.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vicki. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
We usually know who the board members are, and we check, but...
Not this year. Not this year.
I hope that we can be doing a lot of those live and in person.
Me too. All in favor of next year's board meeting calendar?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Whoa, whoa, whoa. The only I would say is, as Vicki did say, we normally do this, but when we have after the board election, and depending on who's elected, we might have to make some adjustments to the calendar.
Absolutely. We always do. We always manage to adjust to everyone's schedules. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of next year's calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And that concludes the president's report. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, so we're going to transition. So as David begins to pull up the community update, if you're a retiree, we're going to move you into the window. So if you could put your hand up if you haven't yet, and then Adam and I will start moving you into the, into our window before we get started here. But we can only do it if you put your hand up because you'll go to the top, and we know. This is going to, we have a lot of retirees, so this panel is going to be huge. Okay, anybody else? I don't see any here. Oh, hold on, we got two. All right, so we want to welcome you tonight to your special night. We're so sorry we can't do this in person, but we're going to spend a long time honoring you tonight, so get your popcorn ready. So on behalf of the district, I think this is probably the most important board meeting that we have because it is a real opportunity for us to express our deep gratitude for the work that you have done on behalf of the district with our students. And tonight, we have teachers, administrators, staff members, custodians, a part of our program tonight because every, regardless of what job you do in this district, it's all important, and without you and your role supporting our students, we're not the great district that we are certainly, oh, hold on, I need to move some more people over, the great district that we are, that are, that my children are privileged to attend. So we've asked your principals to share some of their thoughts about each of you, and then we also asked you if you felt comfortable to share some of your thoughts with us. So we're really excited to be able to show the community a glimpse of what you've contributed over your tenure experience here in our district, and we're also excited to hear your insights that you felt were important for our new staff to hear based on your experience working in Chappaqua. So I'm going to suggest, because this is long, that you may want to consider stopping your video as David gets ready to pull the retiree video up for the community to view. So David, are you ready?
Yes.
Oh, Annie, I don't know who that little baby is, but she is cute.
I don't know where that she is.
Okay, so David, we're going to get started right now. So everyone, sit back and relax, and we'll see you in about 40 minutes.
Britt Asminson has served as West Orchard's technology aide for 14 years. Her role was an inherently dynamic one and evolved at a rapid pace as new technology and innovative spaces literally and figuratively reshaped what teaching and learning looked like in our school. Britt eagerly embraced these changes as opportunities. She exemplified being a lifelong learner and actively strengthened her knowledge and skill set in order to support teachers and students in levering technology to personalize learning, enhance engagement, and ensure access for all. We hope that in retirement, Britt can shift all of that energy towards her love for adventure and travel. The West Orchard community is grateful that she paused along her pathway to spend these past 14 years with us, and we wish her all the best as her journey continues.
I am pleased to speak for George Benak to celebrate his retirement. George began teaching at Greeley in 1992. He is our current department chair of math and has taught almost every math class available. He has also supported our computer science program and our use of instructional technology. When he was a new program, he was our computer science teacher, instructing students in BASIC and C++. He was also on the very first technology committee in the district and first turnkey committee, training other teachers on laptops. He has been a webmaster, SAT administrator, chess club advisor, and spelling bee pronouncer. He has worked the boards at basketball, volleyball, and football. A community member, parent of Greeley graduates, and fierce advocate for the math department, there is no teacher more invested in Greeley than George. I also know George, as do so many others, as a teacher with tremendous passion for his work, a straight talker with a strong sense of justice, and a talented musician on the guitar, piano, and vocals. He supports his students by combining high expectations with the understanding that we learn from our mistakes, and I know that George will miss his students in those moments when a teacher feels the satisfaction of guiding a student toward inspiration, and I know George will miss his colleagues. George, you leave some big shoes to fill. Enjoy your retirement, knowing that you have shaped your department, and you are leaving us well-positioned to meet the future. Congratulations.
I'm honored to talk about Blanche Blair. Blanche began her career at the school district on July 19, 1999, served as the district treasurer. After 20 years of dedicated service, she retired on November 8, 2019. During that time, not only did she have the oversight of district finances, all the district accounts, including operations and grants funds, but she also oversaw the financing of the two capital bonds. The first bond was to build seven bridges and the renovation of Greeley High School, Bell Middle School, and Rowan Brook Elementary School. The second bond is still in progress, which is making major improvement to all six schools and built two third fields. During her tenure, the district financial standing strengthened, and we improved our Moody's rating from AA2 to AA1 and Bonly to AAA, which is the best rating one can get. She was not only the anchor of the business office, but was also the best party giver with her cooking and baking. We miss her, but we know she is enjoying her retirement, and we want to wish her the best.
I would like to honor Mrs. Ann Bonnington, teacher of reading. Ann started teaching in New York City schools in 1978. She transitioned to Chappaqua in 1998, where she taught third grade for three years and then became a reading teacher at West Orchard, the role she's been in ever since. She's been at West Orchard for 22 years. Ann's primary role is to provide targeted differentiated interventions for students who require reading support, and she's also been a tremendous support to our classroom teachers as well. In her file, I found a letter to Dr. Wilhelm, principal at the time. It reads, "I would like to provide high praise for Mrs. Bonnington, and I support her recommendation for tenure. Last year, Mrs. Bonnington was my son's third-grade teacher. Sam has been struggling with attention and emotional issues, which make it difficult for him to feel comfortable in the classroom. Mrs. Bonnington was a wonderful match. Sam started feeling good about himself under Mrs. Bonnington's guidance. Ann, we thank you for your 22 years of service."
I am pleased to celebrate Lisa Butikin as Vicki on her retirement. Lisa began teaching at Greeley in 1989 and has taught almost every math class we have. She helped to create our pre-calculus courses, introduced AP Statistics, and has served as the math department chairperson and co-facilitator. She has been a class advisor three different times. She coached ninth-grade volleyball, co-ed volleyball, and now keeps score for all our volleyball games. She has participated in countless committees and has enjoyed many midnight runs delivering food and clothing to New York City's homeless. She has advised the math club and the bridge club, and she has mentored many teachers. One year, she mentored three. It is safe to say that Lisa has helped to shape math instruction, her department, and our entire school, and we are the better for it. Lisa's excellence in the math classroom is well-known, and she is equally well-known for encouraging community and relationships with her colleagues. She is a fierce advocate and supporter of the traditions that keep us tied together, including staff breakfasts even during the pandemic, and she is the holder of the communication chain to our retired teachers. She cares deeply about Greeley and its history, her students, and her colleagues. I know, Lisa, that you will have a full life in retirement, enjoying golf, volleyball, pickleball, and I am sure you will find a way to continue working with students, teachers, and math. So to our brilliant friend with a big heart, congratulations. We will miss you.
It is my pleasure to recognize Vinnie Casino on the occasion of his retirement from the Chappaqua Central School District. Vinnie worked for the district for over 20 years, and he brought true passion to what he did. During Vinnie's time in Chappaqua, he was always either on time or early for work, but never, ever late. In fact, he never took a day off, and he retired with over 200 sick days. Vinnie loved interacting with our students, and he'd consistently come in early, sit in the lobby, and chat with them. Vinnie is also a car fanatic, and he could often be found repairing old vacuums with parts from newer models. Bottom line, each and every day, Vinnie showed up to work, ready to work hard, and also inspire those around him. Vinnie, we thank you for your contribution and wish you all the best in your retirement.
When I think of Alicia Daly, the first word that comes to mind is excellence. She has supported so many departments over the years, most recently English, math, and art, and I know I speak for everyone who has worked with Alicia when I say that once Alicia is in your department, you fight to keep her there. Many years ago, as a member of the English department and then later department chairperson, I came to rely on her for almost everything. She has this incredible ability to know what needs to be done now, in two weeks, and in two months, always anticipating the next challenge and always proactively suggesting a solution. She makes everyone around her more successful. Anyone who's worked with Alicia understands the confidence that she inspires. When she is around, nothing can go wrong, and when you make a mistake, there's nothing she can't fix. Whether it is ordering resources in anticipation of a need, arguing with a bookseller for the best price, speeding delivery to make a deadline, or organizing days of exams, she is brilliant. She is also loyal, tactful while being direct, empathetic toward others, and dedicated to her departments. Alicia, I can't tell you how many people have said a version of, "We need Alicia. She does all of our," and just fill in the blank. It's a recognition that there seems to be nothing you can't do. You are missed. Enjoy your retirement. Congratulations.
It is my pleasure to recognize Pat Donovan on her retirement. Pat began teaching at Greeley in 1997 and has dedicated herself to teaching students chemistry, physics, and science research. For many years, she has served as the science department chairperson and is now the science department co-facilitator. She has coached the Science Olympiad team, advised the club class match, which connected Greeley students to younger students in need, providing them with supplies, resources, and friendship. She participated in teacher action research and Critical Friends, and she has served on many committees, working to hire new teachers and study how space influences instruction. When Pat leaves, above all, she will miss her students, their willingness to learn, and their sense of humor. I know that Pat speaks for all of us in education when she says that leaving behind the personal interaction with her students and the joy that this work brings makes retiring very hard, and I know her students feel the same way. In her class, Pat brings an excitement about science and an intense fascination about how the world works, which is contagious. Pat, I've appreciated working with you, your thoughtful approach to education, and your drive to never stop learning yourself. And even if that Alaskan cruise might be on hold for some time, I hope to see you on Block Island, and I wish you many happy years in retirement. Congratulations.
I'm here this evening to recognize Tim Doyle on the occasion of his retirement after 22 years of service as the assistant principal at Bell Middle School. Retirement events such as this do not permit enough time for me to outline the many, many achievements and successes of Tim. So in the time allotted, I'll aim for the essence of Tim and try and capture some of his leadership and personality. Tim was considered to be a promise and trust keeper at Bell. He lost many hours of sleep worrying about students and families. He worked painstakingly on our schedule and on reports. He kept those trains running. He always, always put the students' interests first above his own, and he was willing to have difficult conversations to ensure that we had the kind of middle school where young adolescents could feel safe and secure and welcome. Thank you, Tim. On a personal note, I thank you for being a great colleague and partner over these years and for sharpening my own saw and my own thinking and being a great help and a trusted colleague. I know, Tim, that you have always put duty above yourself, service above reward, and today, there are so many adults who, because of your help when they were young and sometimes maybe experiencing challenges as a... and sometimes maybe experiencing challenges as adolescents, are now thriving as adults. I salute you onward, and thanks for such great service.
I would like to honor Mrs. Mary Ellen Farricane, special education teacher at West Orchard. Mary Ellen began her career as a classroom teacher in 1972, just a year after West Orchard opened its doors. She was a classroom teacher for seven years, after which she left to raise her family and her children. She returned as a permanent substitute in 1996, and then in 1997, she became our special education teacher for the last 23 years. I looked at her personnel file to find a note from a parent. "We were struck by how patiently you watched and held back, giving William space when he needed it, providing support unobtrusively and almost invisibly when he needed it, and pushing him out of his comfort zone gently yet firmly when he was stuck." This encapsulates Mary Ellen's approach with all students. Mary Ellen, thank you for your 31 years of service to West Orchard.
Dr. Martin Fitzgerald, principal of Robert E. Bell Middle School, is retiring after 35 years in education. Before becoming an administrator, Martin taught English, reading, and physical education. He's been with the district since 1998 when he became the assistant principal of Bell Middle School before taking the helm in 2003. His contributions to Bell and the district have had a tremendous impact on so many of our students, our faculty, our support staff, and our families. Patient and thoughtful, practical and visionary, and unbelievably kind, Martin is an outstanding leader, a gentleman, and a scholar. Martin empowers students to contribute to a school climate that is positive and inclusive, believing that middle school programs and practices must be developmentally responsible to the needs of young adolescents. Martin's insights, demeanor, and professionalism lifted the level of instructional work for all students in this district. He will be sorely missed by the entire administrative team. For all that Martin has accomplished at Bell and for all he has contributed to Chapua and our school community, please join the district in thanking him and wishing him well as he moves on to future endeavors.
I am pleased to celebrate Rob Fortlini on his retirement. Rob began teaching at Greeley in 1996 when he was tasked with expanding our video and television production program, for which he wrote a new curriculum. As part of this effort, he began the Production Workshop class, a collaboration between art and theater, where the video students produced films and the acting students performed. He founded the Television Production Class, instructing students in the process of the live broadcast. Part of Rob's intention in his film classes was to recreate his own film school experiences for his high school students. A number of Rob's students have gone on to film school themselves, and some have returned after the first year to tell him that they had already learned the curriculum in his class. And he has introduced many Greeley students to photography, both digital and his true passion, film photography. As an active artist himself with a darkroom in his home, Rob did not just teach a subject. He shared a part of himself with his students and inspired them with his deep commitment to photography. Beyond his classroom, he has advised the filmmaking and television production clubs, as well as the publication The Greeley Voice and the school yearbook. Rob will miss sharing his passion for photography and film with his students and opening students up to an art form that could change their lives. Rob, I wish you a happy and productive retirement with your family and art. Congratulations.
I'd like to congratulate Tricia Greco. Tricia Greco is finishing up her 17th year at Seven Bridges. Tricia has taught in Oklahoma, in Montana, at Ohio, on a Dayton Air Force Base. She's certified as a speech pathologist, a special educator. Worked with many students with ADHD and Asperger's over the years. True professional. Reading some of her references from back when she was hired. She was top 10% of any educator ever met. Excellent rapport with students, staff, teachers, very knowledgeable, gifted in working with parents, a model of inclusion. I can't say enough great things about Tricia. We're certainly going to miss you at Seven Bridges. I'm going to miss you with our Penn State/Ohio State banter, but I'll know where you are. Congratulations, Tricia, on your 17 years in the Chapua Central School District, and we wish you the very best.
Bob Herodis was a physical education teacher and coach of many different sports at Greeley for the last several years. Mr. Herodis was respected by his peers, admired by the administration, and is most noted for creating the wonderful community event that is known as the Fun Ball Tournament, that is honored each year in his name now. We thank Mr. Herodis for his many years of dedicated service to our students.
It is my distinct honor to recognize Grafflin retiree, Joanne Cohen. Joanne worked in the corporate world and served as a Girl Scout leader for a number of years before we were fortunate enough to have her join the Grafflin staff as a teacher aide in February 2006. It seems like yesterday that I called her on a Friday afternoon to start on Monday morning. Joanne's transition into her new career was seamless. She quickly learned about her new responsibilities and set out to develop positive relationships with the students and staff. Joanne's myriad of assigned duties included supervision at lunch recess, distribution of book packs, first grade classroom support, and greeting visitors at the front desk. Joanne would lovingly describe herself as a jack-of-all-trades. In September 2009, Joanne accepted a teaching assistant position at Grafflin. During her career as a teaching assistant, she has supported students and teachers in every grade level. Joanne was assigned to Seven Bridges for the 2011-12 school year. When she returned to Grafflin the following year, Joanne told her colleagues it was like returning home after being away for a while. Anyone who has worked with Joanne will tell you that her success as a teaching assistant is due to her calm and quiet approach. She works hard to get to know every student personally, academically, and emotionally. Joanne will be terribly missed at Grafflin by the students, teachers, and her fellow teaching assistants, but she can't wait to spend face-to-face time with her recently born granddaughter. Joanne, the Grafflin staff joins me and wish you the very best in your next adventure in life.
Rita Lee has been West Orchard's music teacher for 21 years. Rita holds a deep appreciation for all the arts, including literature. One of her most beloved books is The Little Prince. The quote from the book that most closely reflects her legacy here at West Orchard is, "It is only with the heart that one can see rightly; what is essential is invisible to the eye." Everything Rita did was from the heart. Her passion manifested as dedication, creativity, and beauty. Every member of the West Orchard community holds vivid memories of sitting in the cafetorium and being moved by the sights and sounds of our children using their voices to share learning and inspire change. While in those moments, their collective powers have felt almost magical, they are actually the very real reflections of Rita's tireless efforts, boundless imagination, and commitment to excellence. In times of celebration and in times of sorrow, Rita's works of the heart have united and strengthened our West Orchard family. We will miss her dearly, but promise that her legacy will play on.
I'd like to wish Diane Medeo a happy retirement. 17 years in the Chapua Central School District. Before that, she worked at John Paulding School in Tarrytown, as well as the Bosse's in Yorktown Heights. Total professional, very thorough, helpful, brings a ton of energy, excitement, the highest level of professionalism, dedication. She not only brought her talents to Seven Bridges, but she also spent time at Roaring Brook, where she was an administrative assistant. And from what I learned and looking at her files, she was the assistant principal over there for some time. So she served on leadership teams. She developed new screening processes for kindergartners. She chaired elementary science committees, was the chair on the Curriculum Council, developed staff development. She did a ton of things, and I wish honestly that I knew all of these things. I should have looked at her first resume sooner. She is just a wealth of knowledge, always giving 150%. She's going to be missed dearly at Seven Bridges, and I can't think of a more selfless person that I've met. And we wish you all the best, Diane, in your 17 years in the Chapua Central School District.
It's my pleasure to recognize Monica Mandell on the occasion of her retirement from the Chapua Central School District. Monica became a member of the Roaring Brook faculty in 1994. During her early years, she served as a kindergarten teacher and was also an active member of the school community. When Monica moved from kindergarten to first grade, she developed a daily literacy block and used a variety of formative assessments to differentiate instruction for each of her learners. Her principal during that time noted that Monica was a reflective and thoughtful teacher, who was committed to continuous improvement and often sought feedback on her professional practice. Monica continued to expand her instructional repertoire as she moved to third and then second grade. She assumed a wide array of leadership roles within the school, serving as team leader, new teacher mentor, and member of the school-wide child study team. She's maintained a risk-free environment in her classroom, one where her students feel safe to ask questions and share their thinking with their peers. Monica, your curiosity, intelligence, and commitment to continuous learning have contributed to the success of your students and our entire community over these past 26 years. We thank you for your contribution and wish you all the best in your retirement.
Good evening. I'm honored and delighted to say a few words about Manuel Manny Martins. Manny's success story is truly inspiring. As a young man, he left Portugal and moved to France and then to the US to make a better life for himself. Over the years, he's worked three jobs in a factory, bakery, and as a custodian, all so that he could provide a great life and education for his family. We were lucky enough to have Manny join our Chapua team in 2006 as a substitute cleaner. He became a full-time cleaner in 2008 and was promoted to custodian in 2018. Anyone will tell you that Manny is a kind and gentle man who takes great pride in his work. He's a devoted father, friend, and coworker, and always finds the time to say hello. At Grafflin, Manny could be seen each day safely directing the dismissal traffic. We will miss Manny's quiet, reserved presence and his warm smile. All the best to you, Manny, as you enjoy your next adventure in retirement. I hope your plan includes a trip to Portugal. Best wishes.
After 38-plus years in education, this past April, Dr. Heidi McCarthy announced her retirement as the director of pupil personnel services in Chapua. Ever since her arrival nine years ago, Heidi has been a powerful voice for all students. She has been instrumental in moving forward the teaching and learning practices that support an inclusive educational environment. Heidi made certain students with disabilities had every opportunity to participate in our extracurricular program and activities. During her tenure, Heidi provided a wealth of knowledge, a historical understanding, and a unique perspective that were essential in helping the district successfully address the numerous state laws, federal regulations, and mandates. She spearheaded our tri-state consortium consultancy visit focused on our special education program, where she used this feedback to enhance our practices and advocated for adherence to our universal design principles as the district moved forward with social-emotional learning alignment, curriculum alignment, project-based learning in our innovative spaces, technology integration, and personalized learning. Please join us in thanking Heidi for her tireless service and unwavering dedication to the Chapua Central School District community. She will be missed, and we wish her well in her future endeavors.
I'm thrilled to be here to recognize Rocky Meliambro on the occasion of his retirement from Bell Middle School and from Chapua Central School District, where he served for over 26 years. Well done, Rocky. I've known Rocky for many of those years, and in his time at Bell, Rocky has proven himself to be a loyal, dedicated, and committed custodian at our school. Rocky is beloved by staff and students, always available to help out, be that at a locker, or helping people with their belongings, or giving them guidance even with cars and directions in the morning or the afternoon. I want to thank you, Rocky. You always brought joy, and often I heard you sing through the day. And so with that, Rocky, you leave a strong legacy. Bell is better from when you arrived, and that in itself should make you feel strong and good as you move into your next chapter. Happy retirement on behalf of all of us at Bell.
I am pleased to recognize Joe Montori on his retirement. Joe began teaching at Greeley in 2000. He's taught AP US History, Regents US History, Sustainable Futures, which he created, Public Affairs in conjunction with Syracuse University, Ninth Grade Global Studies and Contemporary Issues. He has served as an instructional technology coach, participated in teacher action research, and has advised our Sustainability Club, formerly known as STOP. In his teaching, he broke new ground in his APUSH classes, working to include problem-based learning and active student projects into a content-heavy AP curriculum, pushing us to think differently about instruction. And this work is thriving today. It may not be a surprise to you to learn that Joe entered teaching because of his deep concern for the world and the people living in it. You may not be surprised that he was almost an environmental scientist, but we and so many students are thankful he chose to teach history. His thoughtful and calming presence in the classroom gives space for student voice, and his insightful questions push them to think. Joe has a full retirement ahead of him, is installing solar panels in his home and actively involved in sustainable causes. I know he will continue to improve our world, and he has passed that legacy of concern to his students, though I know one student organization now in search of an advisor. Joe, you will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement.
I am here to congratulate Joanne on her retirement. Joanne spent her first 17 years in Chapua at Roaring Brook. She loved working at Roaring Brook, and she considered her coworkers her family. While at Roaring Brook, she made strong bonds with the children and their families. We were told we were getting a strong, dedicated teaching assistant, but we soon found out how lucky we were that Joanne came to work at Bell. She immediately got to work, learning all she could about Bell, and would often ask me questions in order to do the best job she could. I would often see her in a classroom, taking notes and doing all she could to learn the new curriculum routines and trying to understand how middle school children acted. It quickly became obvious why the children love her. She has a calm approach to working with the students and has tons of energy. Above all, she has a great sense of humor and doesn't take herself too seriously. Joanne, you will be greatly missed, and I thank you for all you have done for the students at Bell and Roaring Brook. You will be missed tremendously. Enjoy the next chapter in your life, and thank you for dedicating yourself to the students in Chapua for so long. Congratulations.
It is a distinct pleasure for me to have this opportunity to recognize a distinguished and dedicated career in the service of the children of Chapua Central School District. And more importantly and personally, to have had the opportunity of spending many years working with you at Bell Middle School. I do not have the time, and I would need a lot of hours, to scratch the surface of the work and hard efforts of Pat while she was in service at Bell Middle School. But it would be impossible for me to capture the quality and the depth of the relationship she forged with the children, her families, and the adults at Bell. Pat has rightly secured a name among the names of the greats who have walked through Bell Middle School. She is considered an institution. But more importantly, Pat's legacy is indelibly etched on the lives of so many children who she cared for and looked after in her time at Bell. Pat, I wish you a long and happy retirement. I'm sure you will have many more adventures. I know you always kept your eye on the prize.
It is my pleasure to recognize Doris Puglisi on the occasion of her retirement from the Chapua Central School District. Doris is someone who has been described by her colleagues as someone with a kind soul and a huge heart, and she's always thinking about others before herself. Doris has taught students of all ages, as she has spent time at Seven Bridges and Bell, as well as Roaring Brook. It's obvious from spending time with Doris how much she enjoys working with children and how much of herself she absolutely pours into these students to ensure they move forward with their literacy abilities and get what they need. Doris absolutely thrives on watching her students grow as readers. Also, Doris has a dog named Tara, who she religiously takes on long walks every morning before coming to school. She also has a charming house on Cape Cod, where she plans to spend her days of retirement. Doris, we thank you for your contribution and wish you all the best in your retirement.
I am here tonight to honor Jerry Sully, our library media specialist. Jerry began his career in Bronxville for six years as a library media specialist, and then came to Chapua and has been in Chapua for 22 years. He's instilled the love of books and literacy. He engaged students in game-based learning for library skills, research, and recently, coding and project-based learning. coding and project-based learning. Jerry has a passion for tennis. He is a coach at our high school here at Greeley, and students will forever remember the Sully Card, a card that was given to students earned in the library only to be redeemed later for a short volleyball or wiffleball game with Jerry. Students cherish this so much. Recently, in early May, Jerry received an email from a former student who's now 30 years old who found the Sully Card she had saved over the years. Congratulations to Jerry Sully for his 22 years of service to West Orchard.
I'd like to congratulate Laura Ann Triglia on her retirement. After 20 years, Laura came to us from Bell. Prior to her teaching at Bell, she taught in Scarborough. Smart, smart cookie, graduated from BC, magna cum laude, longtime collaborator, assessment guru, very passionate about bringing parents way back when she started the Parent Contact Program, department chair, supervised teaching assistants, trained them, served on panels. Laura has done it all. We're so thrilled to wish her on to the next chapter, a true professional, one of our very best collaborators, and we're truly going to miss you, Laura. Congratulations on your retirement from all of us at Seven Bridges.
I'm pleased to recognize Steve Warren on his retirement. Steve began teaching at Greeley in 1990. For 30 years, he has inspired students to learn Spanish and to enjoy themselves while learning Spanish. Always focused on authentic experiences, he partnered with an elementary school teacher through Teacher Action Research to work on language acquisition and the development of reading skills, such a simply brilliant idea that teaching younger students to read for the first time would inform teaching older students to learn to read in a new language. Steve has served twice as class advisor and many times as a new teacher mentor. In fact, he was my mentor in 1998. Can you imagine my incredible good fortune of having had Steve to guide my first steps at Greeley with humor, truth, and kindness? Steve's classroom is a place of joy and a place of humanity. Every student who enters his class feels challenged to learn and personally supported. His students will miss him terribly, as will the school. Of course, his legacy is strongly felt within his subject area, but also in the larger community, where he has dedicated himself to building sustaining relationships and where he has advocated successfully for equity, kindness, and understanding. He is the founder of Alliance for Equality, which has created a safe place for all students, helped to shift the culture at Greeley, and is thriving to this day. Steve, Greeley is a better place because of you. Enjoy a joyful life in retirement. Congratulations.
On behalf of the PTA and the families we represent, we say farewell and good luck. Education holds answers to just about every problem we face, and your commitment to a career in this district means that you have done much good for many. It's said that through education, we can affect eternity. You've built a valued, important legacy through your work here. We hope you remember your students and their parents as fondly as we will remember you. We thank you for partnering with us through the years, and we wish you every happiness.
I hope you're well. Everything is well here in the Benak household, although we're suffering a little from cabin fever. How do I summarize 28 years at Greeley in parting words? We teach more than mathematics and science and world language and physical education. Teaching is all about relationships, and our students need to know that we love them as if they were our own children. Doesn't mean that sometimes we don't take on the role of a disciplinarian, but everything that we do is tempered by that love of young people and trying to help them to grow into adulthood. I've been very fortunate at having some wonderful colleagues and students over the years, and I love them truly, and I won't miss them all. I hope to come back and visit, and I thank you all for what you've done for me in my 28 years at Greeley. It's been a wonderful ride, and I hope to see you soon. Bye-bye.
Hi, I'm Lisa Biedekin. This is Vicky. This is my 31st year at Horace Greeley High School in the math department, where I've been for more than half of my life. I want us to focus on the fact that we should keep a balance, keep standards high, and take care of each other, focus on being a caring, committed community, dedicated to teaching and learning. I love that it's a place where it's okay to like school and that those of us that are a little different can fit in. Thank you to everybody, my friends, the administration, parents, teachers, and students who have made my career amazing. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Doyle. I'm the Assistant Principal at Bell School. I've been at Bell for 22 years. I'd like to first start by thanking everybody for making my time at Bell so rewarding and wonderful. The staff that I have worked with, I'm so impressed by their professionalism and their devotion to the students. The students that have come through have been wonderful, and I'm always grateful for the opportunity to work with those students and work with their families that have been so supportive. My one piece of advice that I would give to the person that is taking my place is to take advantage of the wonderful people that you have working with you. As I said, we have a staff that is so professional and is so dedicated to doing the best that they can for the students of this school. And the more that you can reflect and you can work with other people and get more heads involved in decisions, the better off you're going to be. I think, as the saying goes, two heads are better than one, and the more that you can bounce around ideas off of each other and be willing to take time to make the best decision, the better off that your decision's going to be. So I wish you luck, and I wish the best for the building, and I'm sure you're going to find your experience at Bell to be just as wonderful as I found mine to be.
Hello, this is Martin Fitzgerald, soon-to-retired principal at Bell Middle School. And this is the segment in the evening where we get to offer a little advice. And so like with all advice, sometimes it is best withheld until requested, and then it should be offered carefully and mindfully. And so for the next leader at Bell, I'd suggest: trust and be trustworthy. Be abundant and generous. Be brave of heart. Be patient. Listen, observe, learn. Recognize the privilege of leadership. Check your ego at the door. Be compassionate with yourself, compassionate with others, and recognize the gift and blessing of a life spent in service of children. The time passes quickly. Stay awake and ever onward.
Hi, this is Robert Colleen. I was an art teacher at Horace Greeley for 23 years. My advice to any young artist would be, when you're creating, to keep the real purpose of art in mind. To quote the philosopher Suzanne Langard, "The purpose of art is the creation of form symbolizing human feelings." Try to always keep this approach in mind.
Hi, Tricia Greco here with my mom and kids in sunny California, where I plan on retiring. I moved to Chapacua from Montana in 1997, and I've been in the Chapacua School District for 21 and a half years. I started back in 1999 as a 5th grade special ed teacher at West Orchard and came to Seven Bridges when it opened. For several years, I've been part of the ESY program and have served as department chair. Two of my four children attended schools here and are graduates from Greeley. My advice to new teachers: your relationship with parents is key. We're in this together. Good luck. You couldn't be in a better educational district.
Hi, my name is Joanne Cohn. I'm a teaching assistant at Grafflin Elementary School. I've been working for the Chapacua School District for about 15 years. My advice to a new teaching assistant would be to always bring a bag of tricks, because you always have to expect the unexpected. And in that bag, you need to bring your patience and your compassion. You must be flexible, creative, and willing to collaborate with many other colleagues. But most of all, enjoy the ride. Thank you.
My name is Heidi McCarthy, and I recently retired from the Chapacua School District as the Director of Pupil Personnel Services after serving 10 years in the district. My retirement lasted a weekend. I am currently continuing to do important work on behalf of individuals with disabilities within my own community. The picture that I shared with you of my family is one that was taken this past winter, and unfortunately, due to our current health situation, we have not been able to be back together since then. But I am thrilled to announce that since that picture was taken, we welcomed another member into our family and are looking forward to welcome yet another little member into our family in August. My advice for someone who will be taking my position may sound cliche, but it's really about the why and the who, and that is, if you focus on why you are doing the work, and if you focus on the students, and do the work with integrity and honesty and passion, it is the most rewarding and fulfilling job that you will ever have. I'd like to wish my fellow retirees good health and happiness in your retirement, and I wish you all the very best. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne Wozzachowski. I'm a teaching assistant for 19 years. My piece of advice for new employees that are coming in as KIs is that you are going to be a team player. You're going to be working with the most amazing group of teachers, dedicated, professional teachers. Also, my final advice is let the children know that you're there for their share in their successes, and good luck.
My name is Pat Pollock. I've lived in Chapacua for 32 years. My children received an outstanding education here. In the year 2004, I became the full-time nurse at Bell School, probably the hardest job, but I loved every minute of it. I've had the opportunity to meet wonderful parents and kids all along the way, and I'm grateful for that. And my advice to anyone coming is, it takes a village. It's a privilege to be in this village, and always remember to let parents and students know that you care.
Hola, I'm Steve Warren. I've been a Spanish teacher at Horace Greeley for 30 years. I've got just one word for you: connect. The heart of this district is not its policies or protocols. The heart of Chapacua is people, so connect with people. Connect with each other. Connect with colleagues, parents, and students. Celebrate, mourn, and laugh together. Get angry, be frustrated, express joy together. Recognize, congratulate, and encourage each other. Just connect.
Okay, you got it. All right, so that was... First, I want to thank everyone for contributing to the video, our administrative team, and David Hayes for creating it, and of course, all of our retirees for their parting words of advice. We honor you, we celebrate you, we're sorry we couldn't be together physically tonight, but thank you for joining us virtually, and we hope you have a wonderful retirement with your families. And thank you so much for all the service that you have given to this district. We're a better school community because of you, and we so appreciate you. So, we're going to wave goodbye, and thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. And we're just going to give ourselves a chance to zoom you out, so we can keep going here at the meeting.
Thank you so much for your service.
We miss you all.
Congratulations.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All right, so Adam, or David, are you back on the thing? David, did you come back?
Here.
Okay. Can you... Give me one second. I'm gonna... I think I'm going to share my screen. I'll share my screen.
I just want to say thank you for putting together that video. I think it really was lovely.
Okay, all right, so let me continue with the superintendent's report, and I will share my screen. Okay, so I just have a few updates. I think it's important that I do this every meeting. Even if I don't have an update, I just want people to know we're still thinking about these things. So, the first is, I want to talk a little bit about the June 20th graduation. So Andrew had sent out a communication that we would be doing a ceremony using cars in town, and we still plan on doing that on the 20th. But he received some feedback from some of our kids that they really wanted us to wait to try to do a socially-distanced ceremony on campus, so we're trying to... We're committed to doing that as well. So, part of our thought process is that we want to make sure that every student has the opportunity to participate in graduation. So the only way to do that is to hold the ceremony on the 20th, because we have some students that are going to be commissioned into the military. So in order for us to be able to support them in their graduation and also adhere to the executive order, we are going to do an onsite graduation in our town on the 20th, and we're still working on finalizing the site, and we know that Andrew will be sending out something, if not tomorrow or Friday, definitely on Monday. He has to walk the site one more time with the sound and visual engineers. But if the executive order relaxes and we're able to do something in person, we have no problem having an additional ceremony in July, and then for our students who are able to attend that, we'll be able to... We'll have a second ceremony. So I hope everyone feels that we're able to honor their wishes in that way, but we do feel it's important that we do move forward with the date of the 20th, given the current situation that we're in and the information that we have from the governor's office. What we can't do with a ceremony that's as important as graduation is make decisions based on what-if or unknown possibilities. And right now, what we do know is what that executive order says and what we're allowed to do. We don't know if that's going to change. So without that... Absence of that information, we need to make the best decision we can for our kids. So this is how we feel like we're able to try to meet the needs of everyone. So that's the first thing I just wanted to share, but Andrew will be communicating more information out in the near future. The second is, I know that there's a lot of questions about kids picking up their stuff. So over the course of this week, we have faculty coming into the building, and we are packing students' information and we're organizing their items, because it's likely that when we do do our student pickup, we'll try to facilitate that outside. So for the next two weeks, we're preparing students' belongings for parent pickup, and we'll share with our parents how we'll be facilitating that towards the end of June. More information will be forthcoming from the principals. Since our last meeting, we did find out that we aren't able to hold summer school in our buildings, that that needs to be done virtually, which means our buildings will be closed to any community organization that wants to use our facilities, inside facilities this summer, so we won't be able to host summer camp in our facilities. But if people have questions about what type of summer camp programs may or may not be available, they should reach out to the town, but I did want to update the community that because we can't facilitate summer school in our buildings, we can't facilitate any kind of programming for any of our other organizations within our buildings. We still don't have any feedback on how fall athletics will proceed, but we anticipate hopefully having something at the beginning of July, but I know that registration will continue as scheduled, because absent of information, we need to move forward. And then, I did want to talk a little bit about September. So I wanted to share a slide with you about how New York State, the Department of Education, is moving forward with giving districts guidance and regulatory language on what their expectations for how we should be reopening in September. So the first... They have a three-phase process. The first is information gathering, so they're having these meetings across the state to get information from constituents, and then they're going to synthesize that information in Phase Two, so they have a task force that will be processing the feedback that they receive. And then, after that task force processes that information, and the task force is made up of all different types of stakeholders. But after they process that information, the Board of Regents at the July 13th meeting should be making some regulatory decisions about how we should be opening the buildings in September. in September. Now, I'm not really sure if that's a parallel process with the Governor's Office, who also said he would be giving us guidance, or if they're gonna merge their efforts. I'm not sure. But what I do know is that it is highly likely that there will be an expectation, and quite frankly, I think this is a good process for us all to be engaged in. But there will be an expectation that our district has our own task force made up of stakeholders to help talk about and guide our reopening process. And we'll start having those meetings once we understand what the baseline guidance is from either State Ed or the Governor's Office. And I'm still waiting for the State Ed Department to provide guidance on what the expectation is and what the membership should be for those district-based task forces. I mean, if I don't get that in the future, I'll work collaboratively with my colleagues to figure out what that membership should look like. But we are still waiting on some more guidance from State Ed on how to move forward. What I don't want to do is I don't want to assemble a whole cadre of people and start making decisions for September, and then after we do a whole bunch of work, have State Ed or the Governor's Office negate that work by passing regulations or executive orders that make us have to shift our thinking. So we're well-positioned to negotiate and navigate within whatever regulations or executive orders are issued because of our pre-purchasing that the board supported back in April and May. So I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we'll likely engage in in the near future, once State Ed finishes their three phases and provides us with the regulatory language that we need in order to start making some decisions about what September should look like. And of course, if the Governor comes out with something before that, then we would be able to move quicker with our meetings on how we're going to be approaching reopening. I mean, it's my hope that we'll be able to reopen in September with minimal interruption or adjustments to how, you know, we support our kids in our buildings, but that most certainly may not be realistic, and we understand that as well. I just wanted to do some school budget updates, so it's... This is the June 3 update. So all of our ballots are due next Tuesday, and I think because of the complications as a result of the coronavirus, the mail process has not been as it normally is in our community. And I know that all of our ballots have been mailed. They were mailed last week with our newsletters. It's taking more time than it usually does for our families to receive them. So as Jane had mentioned, if you haven't received your ballot yet, all you need to do is email Lisa, and she'll help support you, and we'll get you a ballot. And I also am going to recommend, based on what's happened in terms of sending out the ballots, that you may want to seriously consider using the Dropbox in front of the ed center to be sure that we have your ballot on time, so that it's counted on the June 9 election and budget vote process. So that's just a consideration that I feel like I want to share with you, based on what we've been experiencing in our district regarding mailing the ballots and mailing the newsletter, because it has taken some time, much longer than usual, for our families to receive them. Oh, and then we have a number of grants on the agenda tonight, and we are so grateful to the CSF for their continued support, even when we face these really difficult economic times, to allow the district to press on and be innovative and progressive for our students. So I asked Adam if he could talk very briefly about the grant slate that's in front of the Board of Education tonight. So, Adam?
Thank you. Let me start by just thanking the CSF for their generous donations in all these different areas. There's some really exciting grants that are gonna lift the level of our experiences in many of our buildings for our students. So it's really exciting, and they help us stay on the edge of innovation, which is just terrific for our students and our educators. I do want to mention, I know the attendees can't see who is in attendance, but the board members can, and many of our teachers that have submitted grants are there attending, so we certainly appreciate their work in submitting the grants and filling out the grant applications. And I've even noticed that we have some students and students' families. This year, we had several grants that the students helped write and recommend as part of persuasive writing units and other things that they did, so we certainly appreciate their involvement in the grant process as well. So to all of our attendees that have written grants and participated in the process, we really appreciate that. And I want to thank Leslie, Gillian, Tara, and Ayellet are the people that I work most closely with from the CSF, but I know that they have a whole army of folks behind them that help support the process. So it's just been a pleasure working with them throughout the course of the year, especially as we've had to be nimble and shift along the way. So we've got a really impressive slate of grants for the board's consideration tonight. I did take some liberties in changing some of the numbering here. The numbers correspond to the agenda numbers, but they are a little out of sequence, just so I can cluster grade levels together and schools together, but I'll note that as we go. So the first two are 5.6 and 5.7, and you can see that the one on the left there is the submitted by Ryan Sblane, and Ryan's here in the audience, for $9,433 to install a new climbing wall and mat system at Grafflin. So it's a traverse system where students don't get very high, but they do get an experience of rock climbing, and they can move kind of left to right on this wall and minimally up and down on the wall. So that's a terrific grant that is gonna enhance the physical education program over at Grafflin. 5.7 is an upgrade of our sound system over at... Our sound and display in our cafeteria over at West Orchard. So Jim Skug and his team submitted that grant. It's a fairly sizable amount there at $32,637, so we certainly appreciate that. It's gonna give us the opportunity... We use those spaces not just as cafeterias, but also as presentation spaces for a large group presentations, and even for, you know, going forward to potentially spread out people, because it is a large space to do instruction. So 5.8 and 5.9. 5.8 is exciting. This has been in progress for months, certainly before the current climate that we have encountered now. This is a classroom library diversification grant. So this is all about making sure that our students read books with diverse characters and written by diverse authors, and to give them an opportunity to use those books as windows and mirrors to... So they reflect people like themselves, but also as is windows out to the world. So written by diverse authors have diverse characters in them. And again, it's a sizable grant. It's $30,500. I partnered up with Jamie Edelman, our Director of Literacy, Alyssa Stover, who I believe is in the list of attendees there, Assistant Principal over at West Orchard, and Jen Thompson, who's one of our literacy professional developers. So that's going to impact all of our elementary school libraries across the whole district. And by libraries, I mean classroom libraries, so students will have an opportunity to access those books in the fall. 5.9 is on the right there. You can see large format displays in West Orchard Gym, and we're integrating more and more technology into our gym classes with pedometers and other fitness apps. And these large displays will be large interactive displays that the teachers can project their devices up onto a big screen. So that way, when a teacher has an iPad with a fitness app, for example, they can project it up onto the screen, or project other things that the students can engage in with regard to physical education. So that one was submitted by our physical education team over at West Orchard, and again, a sizable grant at just over $24,000. So the next grant was an Instagram. It's 5.11, and this is one that I kind of jumped because I wanted to cluster the elementary grants together, but this was an Instagram for some floor chairs and desks, submitted by Mara Cohen, Warren Whitney, Laura Endy, and Karen McNally. It's the third-grade team over at Douglas Grafflin, and this grant will give the students the opportunity to use more flexible furniture. They got some low desks, or they've requested some low desks that they can sit down on the floor, and also some flexible chairs. We do have some similar models in the third grade over at Grafflin now, so this will round out the classrooms that don't have them. And this was actually a result of some student-generated persuasive writing that contributed to this grant, so we appreciate that student voice coming through. The next one is also submitted by Warren Whitney and Karen McNally over at Grafflin for third grade, and the CSF graciously expanded that to include our other elementary schools, so it shows up as two different grants, 5.13 and 5.14, the first one being that original grant that Grafflin submitted. And then Mary Devane and I asked if we could expand that over to our West Orchard and Roaring Brook third-grade teams, and this is all about activities around the election for the fall. So this will give us some subscriptions and also some maps to be able to track the Electoral College as we go through that process. So then we go on to the high school and the middle school. On the left side, you can see an Academic Commons redesign grant, so Matt Friedler, Priya, Daniel Valentine, and the team, the Academic Commons redesign team, which included many students on that team, actually came up with a couple of different plans. Now, this one is in a bit of a holding pattern, because we want to make sure that whatever recommendations we get with regard to appropriate spacing and distancing and furniture, that we can create a space that complies with that. But we have earmarked that money, that $50,000 from the CSF, and we appreciate that grant to support that work at the Academic Commons over at Greeley. And then on the right side, 5.12 is a drum kit and accessories for the orchestra over at Seven Bridges for $2,500. So that concludes the slate that you have there on your agenda. Again, I just want to thank the CSF. I think they do want to make a statement and look forward to it in the public comment period, but we do want to thank them for their generous contributions to enhancing our instructional programs across the district.
And then, Adam, did you want to talk about... Or I can talk about. We have, as you know, we have our Guidance Counseling Program Review, and we are making an adjustment to our contract based on the fact that we are not onsite. So they are going to provide some additional consulting support at no cost to us to be able to facilitate the review, even though they're engaged in it virtually. Adam, did you have any other comments you wanted to make about?
Just that it extends... That agreement extends the deadline. We're hoping to wrap this up June 30, I think is when the previous contract ends, so this is no additional cost. It just pushes out that timeline and gives us some additional things that we can engage in through the distant Zoom model.
And then, we thought that it would make sense at this meeting for Adam just to share with you how he and his team are thinking about supporting professional development over the summer. So if you remember, we had our summer PD games 2020. Well, the Olympics was canceled, and we anticipate not being able to be onsite this summer based on the guidance that we received from the Governor to date. So Adam and his team has redesigned how they're going to handle professional development. So Adam, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the goal for the summer has shifted a bit. We still are aligned with our district's priorities. However, we want to make sure that our teachers are really well-prepared to be nimble, to be able to teach in any environment that they may face in the fall. And we anticipate that things may change really quickly in the fall, and we want to make sure that our entire faculty is really well-prepared to teach in person, at a distance, or in some combination of those things, and to be able to quickly pivot from model to model as the situation calls for it. And we were kind of thrown into this, as all districts were, with very little notice. It was nice that we could rest a little bit on a lot of professional development and technology integration that we had done for many years that happened to transfer over nicely. But we're also well-aware that iLearning is not the perfect system, that we have a lot of areas that we can grow in, and it's particularly complicated next year if we cannot meet face-to-face with students, that we need to develop ways and design ways to meet synchronously so we can build relationships with kids and make sure that we have the systems in place so we can pivot if we need to. So as Dr. Ackerman said before, we hope and we anticipate that we will be back in school in person in the fall with minimal disruption or interruption, but we want to be ready this summer with just a really fast and able-to-pivot teaching force, so we can turn on a dime if we need to in the fall. And so a lot of the curriculum experiences from the left side remain, but the learning experiences on the right side have shifted pretty significantly. The base camp at the top and the leadership summit at the bottom are regional experiences. We've done those in the past. But the six that are sandwiched in between are six modules, day-long institutes that we've developed to help teachers have lots of conversations around and refine their thinking when it comes to distance learning models and in-person models and models that might blend those two. So that's the work for the summer. So we're really excited about it, and I think we'll be much better prepared to engage in distance learning, should we have to in the fall. And if we don't, these things will lift the level of the in-person, face-to-face instruction that we have going in the district.
And then, Tony, could you please give everyone an update on the Roaring Brook Principal Search?
Sure. Thank you, Christine. So we have posted the position for the Roaring Brook Elementary School Principalship. It's been posted for about a week and a half, and I'm excited to share that we have about 60 applicants already for the position, and reviewing those applications pretty much on a daily basis. I'm especially excited to share that we have a number of sitting principals who have applied for this position from the region and from a little bit beyond the region. So it's great to see that we have candidates who have a lot of experience, rich experience, in like communities and different communities who are looking to join our leadership team. And I think one of our most effective approaches is that we often post our positions, our vacancies, on social media, and we tag people in them, and we hashtag the heck out of them to make sure we get to spread the message far and wide. And so, I mean, I've gotten inquiries from as far as Virginia about people who are interested in potentially applying, so it's great to see that we have that reach and that we are attracting a strong candidate pool. My hope in coordinating schedules with Christine will be that we can start screening candidates actually next week, and then we'll write into our process that we have in place with various committee interviews and task writing prompt as well, as we look to identify the new principal over at Roaring Brook.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
You spoke about kids picking their stuff up from school. The question I've gotten from some parents where they have district-issued devices and also things like library books is what are they supposed to be bringing back?
We're going to send all that information out probably in the next two weeks. We're hoping to coordinate device return with pickup.
Great, thank you.
It looks like we'll be doing it the last week of June.
Thank you, Christine, and everyone. Does anyone have any other questions?
I have one question and one comment. I just want to know on the reopening plans with the State Ed Department, well, do you think that we would have a chance to weigh in with a regional task force for our area? I know that you made a very comprehensive set of plans a while back, and so... And I know that, you know, the CDC has guidelines as well. So I'm just wondering, what's the process for people, for stakeholders, to weigh in?
No. During Phase One, there are opportunities for people to participate in virtual town halls. So I can send you those dates, Vicky, if you would like. I sent our original reentry plan before they were talking about reentry plans to...
I know, yeah.
The Commissioner and to the Governor's Office. We have... There are area representatives that are on that task force, but I think if people want to have their voice specifically heard in that conversation, that's part of Phase One in those town hall meetings, so.
Yeah, and I know that the Governor's Office and the Board of Regents have really worked in separate silos for many years. And so if this can't bring them together, I don't know what will, but I certainly hope that they do come together in some sort of partnership so that we don't get pulled in different directions.
And I think that's part of our strategy, and just waiting before we start really diving and just planning, to see what direction we receive. We are ready because we've been able to purchase what we feel like we need to maneuver within whatever regulations were given. What I don't want to do is spend time planning, and then regulations are passed, which negates all of that work. So I feel like we have a strong enough community here, where if I had to pull together a team of teachers, administrators, board members, parents, community experts, we have a lot of leverage in this community to pull that together very quickly and to plan with some great thinking around how to move forward. So that's why I think a strategy of waiting a little bit longer before we really dive into those conversations makes sense, because if we start diving into that and people start talking about it, it's just gonna create frustration and confusion for the community.
And just as a final thing, I just want to say, as CSF liaison, because they have an extensive list of grants, I just want to thank them as their liaison, and especially their President, Ayellet Pollner, and the entire board for their work. They really do work in great partnership with the administration and faculty to give us a lot of innovative project grants, and especially in this year when they were unable to have their annual fundraiser, they've still come through with the grants for our district. And so really, a great big thank you to CSF. And I also want to thank the community itself, because that's where the funds are coming from. So thank you to the CSF Board and the entire community for supporting our schools through CSF.
Thank you, Vicky. Okay, we are moving along to committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report from our various committees?
Not right now.
No, I think we're good. Okay. We will move along to our public comment period, as most of you are familiar with by now. If you are... As most of you are familiar with by now, if you are an attendee and would like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand virtually, and Adam will move you over to be a panelist. We do still follow the same rules that we do generally with public comment, which is we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. We do need to see you visually, so we need audio and video, and board members will have the opportunity, if they so choose, to discuss amongst themselves any matters raised during public comment at the end of the public comment period. So I'm looking over to see, we do have Jeffrey Mester with his hand raised.
I just moved in Leslie.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, because of CSF.
Sorry.
Let's move Leslie Kuhn in so she can speak on behalf of CSF, and then Jeffrey will be next. Thank you, Leslie. Go ahead.
Hi, Jane. Thank you, and thank you, Vicky and Christine and Adam for all of your kind words. I'm here tonight on behalf of the entire CSF board to thank all of you for the longstanding partnership that CSF has had with the school district. This year has been difficult for all of us, but we're really excited to have been able to pass this great slate of grants that really looks forward to the future of education in our district and will really provide all students at all levels with some great opportunities. So thank you all for assistance.
Well, thank you as well. On behalf of the board, thank you for all that you've given us this year and many years. So thanks so much for these grants this year. I think it's going to be extremely helpful to our school district. Thanks, Leslie.
Bye.
Thank you, Leslie.
Bye. Okay, we'll move over to Jeffrey Mester.
Am I on?
Yes. Hi, Jeff, you're on. Go right ahead.
Right, I'm sorry. Here we go. First, I also want to say as a candidate for the school board that when or should I be elected, I too commit to actively contributing to and supporting the district efforts to educate and combat racism, hate, oppression, and inequalities that people of color experience daily. I applaud the district's and the board's proactive efforts. Second, I want to thank all the retirees for their dedicated service to the students and the community. While the three-minute limit prevents me from listening and speaking about them all, I just want to give a particular shout-out to several: Blanche Ware, Pat Pollak, Martin Fitzgerald, Heidi McCarthy, Tim Doyle, Coach Ardis, and George Brannack. I wish the district had listed them all on the agenda, and I hope that they can post it this summer, and I hope that the district posts the video on the website. It's a terrific effort. One final non-related thing, I asked this at a previous meeting and got no response either publicly or privately, will the board affirm the commitment made by previous board to not raise taxes as a result of the $42.5 million bond? That concludes my comments and questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything to discuss before we move on from public comment? Nope. Okay. All right, that ends, I believe, I'm just double-checking, I believe that ends our public comment period. We will move on to item number three on the agenda, approvals and ratifications. I would like to take items 3.1 through 3.3 together. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the May 19, 2020 special board meeting, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the May 20, 2020 board meeting, and be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the May 27, 2020 special board meeting and budget hearing. Can I have a motion to approve items 3.1 through 3.3?
I move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm not sure whether that was Holly or Hillary. I'll let Lisa decide that. I think it was Holly. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I will move 4.1 instructional as presented. Can I have a second for 4.1?
A second.
Okay. Hillary, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4.2 non-instructional, we have nothing there. So I will move on to item five, our consent agenda. This is where the Board of Education seeks to approve in a single motion relatively routine matters. We've discussed some of them tonight. They include our CSC summaries, it includes the grants so generously given to us by the Chappaqua School Foundation, there are some budget transfers, et cetera. We have a number of items tonight, items 5.1 through, I believe it's 5.20. I'm just going to double-check my paperwork. Yes. So if any board member wishes to discuss that, there will be time to discuss that during, after we make a motion to approve. So as of now, I would ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.20. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Warren. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to take 5.3 off the consent agenda. It's discussed, to be discussed separately.
Yeah, oh, well, we can discuss it here. Did you want to?
Separately on it, or do you?
Do you want to vote separately, or we just discuss it?
I'd like to vote separately on that.
Okay.
So you have to withdraw the motion to
Yes.
approve the entire.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. I will second that. All in favor of withdrawing the motion to approve 5.1 through 5.20 as a consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I would like to move to approve items 5.1, 5.2, and then items 5.4 through 5.20 as part of our consent agenda, leaving 5.3 for later. I will move to approve those except for 5.3. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion about any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve separately item 5.3, which is be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes an increase to the 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $266,798 for transfer to the Special Aid Fund to fund the portion of the summer special education program from summer 2014 that is not being paid by New York State? Can I have a motion to approve 5.3? Vicky, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Warren, would you like to make a comment and discuss this?
Yeah, I have a little comment to make on here. Every year, we get the same thing. This year, even more. This year, our governor has told us that he can't tell us how much state we're going to get, which I can understand. We're in a difficult situation right now, but it's very difficult for our board or any other board in this state, 700-plus school boards, to manage. What they're doing in this case, we get every year, every year, the state does the same thing to us. They tell us they're going to give us money for our summer programs. They say we have to fund 20% of that, and they would fund the other 80%. Well, I think they're lying to us every year because we, in the past, I just looked at the past six years, we haven't gotten anywhere close to 80%. Well, actually, I guess 75% off of 80, 5% is pretty close to this. We want to take it, look at it that way. But how do you budget, how do we move money around when we don't get what we're expecting to get from the state, no less when they're telling us they're not going to give us what we think in foundation aid? So if we look at these numbers, for the past six years, our expenses were $4.4 million. Our 20% share should have been at $880,000. The state was supposed to guarantee us $3.5 million. The state short-changed us $1.2 million over six years for $200,000 a year. That's about 65, they've only given us about 65% of what they owe us. The highest we've gotten was 75, almost 76%. This year, we're getting less than 44%. Next year, I don't know what we're going to get. Actually, I'm not sure if we're going to have summer programs. I guess we'll have virtual summer programs. I just don't understand why every year, I feel like Charlie Brown with the football. You know, Lucy's holding the football, here we are, Chappaqua is going to kick the football, and the state's pulling numbers out from under us. I mean, a couple of years ago, I guess we should be, Happy Allison's on the board, not Happy Allison's on, Allison and I, we'd go over 20 minutes about this because she and I would feed off each other, because this is something we felt very passionate about. And I still feel passionate about it. I don't understand how we as a district have to write this money off. I like to get to the point where, you know, I've paid enough for my mortgage, I'm just going to close my books, and I'm not going to pay the bank anymore. I like to find out how far, how long I get to sit in my house.
Vicky.
But it's not just us. It's the children of this district that are being disenfranchised by the state of New York and by the planning. I don't know who we can talk to, Vicky. I know you do all the
Yeah, this is a perennial issue, and it's been covered by our regional association, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. It's been covered at the state level by the New York State School Boards Association every year when we go lobby up to Albany, and we have a litany of woes that we go up there and that everyone knows by heart by now. It's really, really disheartening because it's about our kids.
It's about our kids.
And the thing is that, so this is a summer special ed program. It's a mandated program, and when I say mandated, that doesn't mean that we don't want to do it. Of course, we want to serve our special ed kids who need this help in the summer, and the state is committed to paying 80%, and local school districts pay 20%. So this is money that they owe us, and this year is the highest amount that they owe us. They're paying us 35% instead of 80%. The second worst was in 2014-15 where they paid us, I don't know what the percentage was that year, but, you know, you touched on it, Warren, in the last six years, they have averaged a payment to us of 52%. And like you said, we've had a total of $1.2 million over the six-year period. If you put all of the school districts together in our region, how many hundreds of millions of dollars do we think they owe us in the past 10 years? So I just want to point out that, as we've talked about, first of all, an unprecedented possibility of mid-year cuts to state aid, just to tell everyone to understand that this is a hidden way that we've always experienced state aid cuts every year.
I mean, Vicky,
We think we're not getting cuts, we do get cut because we don't get paid what we were promised.
Yeah, I mean, Vicky, if you look at the numbers, right, if we're getting, if the average for the last six years is $202,000, so it's $1.2 million, and we're not the biggest district, we're not the smallest, so let's call us average at this point, they owe us, they owe the district and the children of this state $850 million that they've just written off over six years. And who cares? I don't know who cares. It's us that, we have to care because the kids don't vote, and they know that.
Yeah, they've never come close to 80%.
Never. It's come to 75%.
The year before is 59%, 60%, 59%, 52%, 48%. That's, you know, the past six years is what I've got. It's shameful. It really is. I don't know what to say. It's money that they owe and that they simply don't
It's the same as
...
It's the same as when they
We keep the amount on our books for five years, and then we have to write it off. So that's what we're doing today. We're writing off an amount that is from
2014.
2014.
Yeah.
It's very frustrating, and I understand, I very much, I appreciate you guys mentioning this and discussing it because I think it is important for the public and the community to know that this is something that pops up on our agenda on an annual basis, that every five years, we are writing off this money that we are supposed to get from the state and do not. I think all of us, as we join the board, this is something we do not anticipate, and at some point during the year, during, I know my first board meeting, and I'm sure Hillary's and Holly says, well, when we join the board, that comes up on our agenda, and we're somewhat stunned.
Warren rants.
Wait, what?
And Warren rants about it.
No, that's okay. I think it's important, and I know, I know how much of a state advocate Vicky is. I know that we have tried, and we will continue to try along with other districts. There are all these unfunded mandates, we are constantly getting short-changed. It is a huge amount of frustration, and it's a huge financial burden for a lot of districts, and this is a big amount of money. So I think it's important to state that. There's nothing really we can do other than write it off at this point because we're not getting that money right now, but I think it's just something that we have to continue fighting for.
I don't know. Maybe we should talk to our attorney about this. Vicky, what else have we done from an advocacy besides talking to the wall up in Albany?
Well, I think that one thing that we've accomplished in the past year was to make our legislators in our region, the Westchester delegation, and, you know, in the region, Putnam, Duchess, Rockland, we've made them aware of many, many of our issues. I remember when I started this about nine years ago, you know, with the tax cap legislation in 2011, and all of the issues that we faced, the legislators at that time looked at us and said, we didn't understand that this would be a problem for you. So I think we've come a long way. They are, they've been very responsive and very supportive, and now it's really a matter of the governor's office. That's where we are. That's where we are now.
GEA owes us, I think, somewhere around $8 million. They owe the lower mid-Hudson Valley somewhere on $500 million, they owe New York State, these children of New York State, last time I looked at the numbers, somewhere around $10 billion, and they haven't done anything with that. They just said, well, we're not going to do it anymore, we'll just, but we're not going to pay you back. They just took the money out of our children's classrooms and use it for other things. I'm not saying other things aren't important, but our children are more important.
I just want to say that I really so appreciate having five members of the board really care about what goes on with state funding issues for our schools, because we haven't always had everyone on the board supportive of our board going out and advocating and lobbying and understanding that we are more than just Chappaqua, and what happens outside of our community really affects us and affects our kids and affects our budget. So I just want to say that I really appreciate that all of you have been involved and have been concerned and active in this role. I think it's really important. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is just, it's an insult to the districts and the taxpayers that they just, you know, they give you a number, they mandate something, and then you don't get the money you're expecting, and it makes it very hard to budget and plan out. I think we could probably educate the community more about this as well, because, you know, Warren, you said the children don't vote, but their parents do and pay the taxes. So I think that we could help our community understand the connection between what goes on in the school district and those ballots that they cast at the state level.
It's, I don't want to say this, it's almost, I would rather them tell us, Rowan, you give you 50%, and then be pleasantly surprised that we can budget for that.
Yeah.
But then come back every year saying 80%, and now we have to write the money off.
I know. I mean, we could never
Be honest about it.
We could never, that is not how we operate in Chappaqua. We could not promise paying something and then default, and the state gets away with it.
One more thing here, that John Chow has done an unbelievable job with this every year, trying to manage what we know we're going to get and what we sort of know we're not going to get. But thank you, John, at least from me and then for the rest of the board, for all you do to really help us with our financials and help us through things that we don't, that we don't know are going to bite us eventually in the end, but we do know what we can't do anything about.
John does a lot of planning to make sure that everyone gets the services, and we still manage to pay for it even when the state is not paying its fair share. So thank you very much, John. So now we are at the moment where we have to decide whether we're going to approve this resolution, which unfortunately
Right, because if we don't approve, what do we do? We leave it on our books, and we can't do that because then the state
I know. It creates a problem. So I will ask, all in favor of item 5.3, although we may not be happy about it as we've discussed, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes?
A very hesitant aye.
Okay.
Who was that, five?
That is five, Lisa. Thank you so much. We don't have anything for facilities, moving on to financials. I did want to notice, I see that we have an attendee that has a hand up, and my apologies, we are past the public comment period, and we cannot reopen it at this point, but I would encourage anyone who has a comment or a question to please send it by email or contact any one of us, and we will get back to you soon. send it via email or contact any one of us, and we will get back to you as soon as possible. Thank you so much. I'm moving on to financials. Items, I'd like to take items 7.1 through 7.4 together. This is the treasurer's report for April 2020, the claims auditor's report for March 2020, the treasurer's quarterly report for extra classroom activity counts for March 31, 2020, and the treasurer's quarterly report of team accounts for March 31, 2020. I'd like a motion to acknowledge receipt of all of those reports listed in 7.1 through 7.4. Can I have a motion? Holly, thank you. May I have a second? Vicky, thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I was just wondering why we're all the way back to March for the claims auditor. It's already June.
I don't know if John might be able to answer that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Was he due a report for March?
Well, because of the close down, he was not getting all the...
Documentation?
On a timely basis.
Well, actually, well, I'm sorry. Let me just, I'm looking, you know what, I think that it's actually for April.
No, the claims audit is for March. It says March.
It says audit of claims, April.
Are you saying that perhaps it's just written incorrectly in the agenda, but the backup documentation is for April?
Might be. Check page 110. I'm sorry, I didn't notice this before.
I will open it.
So it says April in the backup.
Yeah, so I think we actually are going to have to...
Can we...
We have to table it.
You're correct, Holly. That's my error. My apologies.
I'm sorry I didn't catch that sooner.
Don't worry. That's my error.
Can we make a motion to...
Can we amend the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd like to amend it. Is that possible, Lisa?
I think you should withdraw the motion.
Right, withdraw and pass it as amended? Is that possible?
It is amended.
Okay. So I would, that's okay. I will, thank you for catching that, Holly. Not a problem. I would like to withdraw my motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.4 as written. Can I have a second to withdraw that motion?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will move to approve items 7.1 through 7.4. Or let's just take the claims auditor out separately. Why don't we do that? I'm going to move to approve items 7.1, 7.3, and 7.4 together. The treasurer's report for April, the treasurer's quarterly report for classroom activities, and the teamwork counts in 7.4. Let's take, I'll make a move to, motion to approve 7.1, 7.3, and 7.4 together. Can I have a second for that motion? Okay, thank you. Hillary, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will move to approve item 7.2 as amended to read, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the claims auditor's report for April 2020. Can I have a second to approve 7.2 as amended?
I saw Vicky.
Okay, I saw you. Okay, I second.
Okay, Vicky seconds. All in favor of 7.2 as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Notice of future meetings, Tuesday, June 9, 2020, 5:00 p.m. As we've discussed earlier, that's our annual budget vote and election by absentee ballot only. The ballots will be counted socially distanced in the Horst-Gillie Gym. And then our meeting after that is Tuesday, June 23, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. Again, via Zoom at this point. Can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:41 this evening?
I move.
Warren, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Holly. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Everyone, have a nice evening.